October 26th Selectmen's Meeting. We'll start off with a Pledge of Allegiance. You can join us.
Pledge of Allegiance to the Pride of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to take a short executive session. We'll reconvene.
Okay, I'll make a motion.
Executive session.
Yes. Make a motion pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Section 2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel. Votes may be taken.
Second.
Motion in a second. Roll call. Jason?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
And Saul Gitts. We'll be in a short executive session. Thank you, Jason. Thank you. Welcome back. We went a little longer than we anticipated. Back to the open session. Public comment. I didn't -- nobody indicated that they had anything in public comment. Discussion and possible vote. Reorganization of the Board. Bill, this was yours.
Yep. Again, the events of the past few meetings, it show me that my silence is complicity. I think the Board needs a new direction. There's no doubt that the current Chair enjoys the position. I just don't know if he enjoys the real work that goes behind making an efficient and effective Chair. It is a lot of hard work. I know I was a Chair for a year. It's not an easy job. It takes a certain skill set, takes a certain commitment, takes a certain willingness to roll up the sleeves and get the job done. In these times, we're shorthanded. It's even more imperative that the leaders take up the baton and not pass it on, but run with it to the goal line. And so I have just lost faith in our current Chair to lead this Board in that direction. So I ask that the Board be reorganized.
Okay. Is there a motion?
So I'll make a motion that we reorganize the Board.
I'll second that for discussion purposes.
Motion in a second for this discussion. Anybody? Kathy?
Dan, raise your hand.
No? Or Dan, do you have something?
Yeah, I just think we ought to stay the course. I think you've done a good job. Everyone's got their own style. And, you know, we're going to make mistakes along the way, but I think you've acted in good faith. I think if we change the Board, it's certainly unprecedented. Years ago, it used to be a rotational basis. It wasn't based upon alliances or politics or anything along those lines. You know, it was a lot easier when you had three years and a three-year term. I mean, strike that at three Selectmen and three-year term when it kind of got more complicated when we had five members and stuff to do a rotational chairmanship with five people in three years staggered terms. But I just think it would create bad blood, resentment, bad precedent, that every time there's, you know, a pothole in the road, you just, you know, throw the baby out with the bathwater. I think it's going to promote -- it's not going to -- it's going to promote discord. It's going to further divide us when we should work more towards odd. If we do have differences, we should talk about all of us trying to be more civil towards one another. We should come up with a more streamlined procedure so people like myself don't talk for five minutes. So if there's more of a time management situation, I think we can address those issues as mature adults. You know, we're going to be limited to two minutes on an issue and, you know, maybe we could follow parliamentary procedures of some sort. Joe Demore recommended that we implement something along that line. Maybe we should. You know, Congress fights a lot, but, you know, the Chairman will say, "You've got five minutes. You can yield two minutes to another member," and they go back and forth on that. So I think we can address issues like that. You know, I don't know what it is. Selectman O'Neill thinks, you know, you're not dedicating your time to. As far as I know, you're -- every time I've called you during daylight hours, you're available. And I don't know that there's ever been an agenda where you, you know, excluded anybody from participation in the process. I think we all collectively decide on what we're going to, you know, talk about for the evening and what's on the agenda. It's kind of a triage system. Some things are more important than others. Some things can wait. But I think you've done that, and I just think it sets a bad precedent and it certainly, you know, we get enough, you know, discord in this town and this state and the country. So I think we've got to work together a little bit better. And I'm willing to work with Bill O'Neill and Kathy and Jason and yourself to try to be better. Thank you.
Anybody else? Is there a motion? Do you have something?
Yes, I'd like to speak. Thank you. So this is not the type of thing that I would like to see us have to consider at this juncture. But there's no question in my mind that our meetings have been dysfunctional, chaotic, and we haven't served the town as well as we should have, despite, I think, individual efforts of individuals on the Board to do things. I know we've all been doing things outside of the meetings, but within our meetings, we're not organized. The agenda's not organized. It's not prioritized. And then we're not allowing a reasonable time for each thing. We're going unreasonably over on some things and completely ignoring other things. And I have to feel that, to some degree, the discord and division within the Board is sort of because of the way our meetings have been managed. For example, I know there was an email that went out saying how everything was going to be handled during the time when the Administrative Coordinator was not here. I never received that, but three members of my Board did, including my Chairman, and I felt -- I felt that, for some reason, part of the Board didn't matter. And to me, on every Board I've served on, and I've served on a lot of them, I've served on the School Committee, served on the Finance Board, I've served on the Board of Selectmen before, and I've served during times when there has been difficult times and difficult decisions. And it takes a lot to really keep the meetings running smoothly, and you need to include everyone in information flow. You have to make sure that all your members are informed appropriately in advance of a meeting so that they know what's going on and what to expect. And that hasn't been happening. I just don't know what else we can do to make it happen, except to try a fresh approach to the running of the meetings. My intention when I ran for this seat on the Board of Selectmen was to give back some time to the town. I said to my husband, "I don't really want a Chair again. I've chaired enough in my life, and I don't feel the need to." And I certainly don't like to take a Chair away from somebody without good reason, but I've heard a lot from residents that they're displeased with our meetings, they're displeased with our progress, and I'd like to be doing a better job for the town.
Okay. Jason, do you have anything?
No, not at this time.
Thank you. Are there a motion? Can we make a motion? Or there's a motion to reorganize and with a second? All in favor of reorganization? Opposed? Three opposed, two in favor. We'll stay the course, I guess. Next order of business? Review -- oh, warrants, Jason. I don't think that showed up on the --
We don't have the numbers.
Jason had it.
I got it. I took them off the warrants when I read them and checked them. They were good. Payroll warrant, 2217, in the amount of $214,199.42.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? None? All in favor? In unanimous.
Make a motion to approve bill warrant, 2217, in the amount of $973,836.19, which breaks down to the town bills, $79,540.56. Whittier assessment, $162,039. Payroll withholding, $554.04. Grants, $83,347.19. Water and sewer, $16,313.39. And light department, $605,042.1.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? None? All in favor? In unanimous. Is that it?
That's it for the warrants.
Warrants. Review Administrator Coordinator Assistant. I think we were looking for a -- somewhere here, we had a paperwork on a -- yeah, you would make -- oh, here it is. The Ultimate Staffing.
Yes.
And what was their -- what was their recommendation?
Well, I explained that we're short-staffed, and we could use some help putting together, at the very least, our meeting packets, the town digital sign, and updating the town website, as well as monitoring the emails for us. And I think it's name is Peter was the individual I spoke to. I got this recommendation through Sarah McGrath on the Finance Board. He believes that he could probably find us somebody who would be willing to work some hours for a temporary period of time. I didn't know if you wanted to make it a month-to-month or three months. I didn't think it would be that long a period of time, but I thought we needed something kind of quick. He spoke about paying about $42 an hour, depending on what the rate of pay would be for the person that we hired. That would be anywhere from 22 to 25. And then, of course, they would take on all the other overhead of that position. We wouldn't have anything other than the contract, and at any point, if we're not happy with the person, we say, "We're not happy. We need -- we want somebody else." They get us somebody else. I just thought we needed kind of a pinch hitter for a little bit here to get us through the next month or two, at least into the new year. What do you -- I wasn't sure what you guys were thinking.
Were they the same as the government solution, staffing solutions that I spoke with, that we're looking for 40% above that for the F E?
It's similar, yeah. It was in line. They were a little bit less, and he's local, so it seems like he might have some more connections locally to find us somebody. I mean, we could -- I don't think we have to pay anything to ask him if he can find us somebody, and we can meet with him and the staffer and decide whatever you would like to do.
I think, if I may, Mr. Chair, I think it's probably a good idea to get somebody in here that's paid to do the job. I know Nancy and Beth spent a better part of eight hours putting together the agenda. Am I able to understand that correctly?
Yeah, I think --
So I think it's probably a good idea to get somebody in here, because I know that Beth has a lot of other things to be doing. So the sooner we get somebody in here to help out until we get everything else situated with the Town Administrator, and the Town Administrator can have their say in what they need for an assistant, I think that would be a really smart move.
I know that Nancy worked with you for a day, at least a day, doing license renewals, and then it was like a day and a half, maybe longer than that, on coming up with the agenda. And, you know, both -- a big thank you should go out to both Nancy Lowendowski and to Beth Kunniff, the Town Clerk, for their assistance. They did a great job. Trying at times, but they got through it. Any other comment on Ultimate Staffing? How long before they could get somebody in here?
Well, if you want, I can contact them. I mean, I'm thinking that we'll keep it small hours, like the initial, like 12 hours or 10 to 12. You remember the initial job that we brought in? Keep it small and manageable so that we don't have somebody that requires oversight.
It's going to be focused at least on two days, which is going to be Wednesday to prepare the initial post, and then Monday to make sure that we can update the final draft of the agenda with all the warrant numbers so we can all see them. Because I know Ellen usually gets that done on Monday, the day of our meeting, or whatever day that happens to be.
Okay.
So I think those will probably be the two key days to get that situated.
Okay. I mean, we did -- we had like a nine to 12 schedule initially. We could do that on like three days of the week, maybe, or?
No, because they're going to have to be here late to do the warrant, the final draft.
Late on Monday.
Work on Wednesday, I believe, because I know Ed's in here for at least that long, working with whoever's here to do the agenda.
Right.
And so -- and then when they took it over after that, to get everything finalized and posted. So, yeah, at least that long, but on the day of our meeting, it has to be later in the evening, just because perhaps they give Ellen time to get it situated, because sometimes she doesn't get this done till --
The warrants.
Three, four, yeah.
Oh, so that's the holdup. So we don't have the -- but the payroll goes out Thursday, I thought, no?
Payroll, yeah.
Well, that's part of --
Bill warrants and stuff, yeah. That final paper, I know she does on Monday.
Okay. And you think it's later in the day?
Yes.
Okay, so Monday we --
That's why --
I talked to Ellen, and she's like, "I just got these done."
Well, I guess --
I usually get here an hour before the meeting, so.
Well, I mean, I'd be willing to, if you wish, if someone had the agenda drafted, I can put those numbers in for the final agenda, if that's all that's needed, when I get out of work. Temporarily, not permanent job. Temporarily. Temporarily.
I think it would be good to be there then, because then they can check all the emails, they can do a lot of other things at the same time.
Okay, if we can get that. I'm just thinking he might be looking for people that have children, so that we might be working within that. I don't know. So if that becomes a stumbling block, I'd be willing to help out on that side of it.
Jason, are you looking for somebody, thinking somebody come in for like 3:00 until maybe our meeting time?
Yeah.
That's a --
Three to six, three to seven, just to get that done.
I'll ask them about that.
Emails.
I thought most of the work was on Thursdays, getting -- because the posting has to be done Thursday.
It's going to be done Thursday.
Yeah.
We should really start doing that on Wednesday, so we don't run into any problems.
So Wednesday, Thursday are kind of the biggest days.
If we don't have any of the information in the packet that's supposed to be in the packet, then it gets moved to the next meeting.
Correct. I agree.
And then that just will alleviate any issues, so. Any last-minute people trying to add things, it just doesn't happen. It gets pushed over.
Okay.
Okay. Anybody else? Phil?
No.
Dan?
So with the Board, does the Board want me to reach out and just see about getting somebody in?
I'm good with that. Would you like a vote?
See who we get.
Would you like to vote it, just to make sure?
Yeah, we'll take a vote to Kathy get ahold of Ultimate Staffing to see if they can come up with somebody. What -- where are they out of?
Um.
Doesn't say anything on here where they are.
I know.
They said they were local.
Right, because he talked about Sacred Heart. His children go there, so I figure he can't be too far. I think I had it on the Internet. Sarah's right there.
Well.
I don't know. Might be on my phone. I can get that for you.
There's a New Hampshire number here.
It might be New Hampshire, but again, there's some local connections, so.
I would want to make a motion to have Kathy get the go-ahead to go contact Ultimate Staffing with the questions, the pay presented for the company, hours. What other hours? You're looking at, Jason, on a Monday afternoon, and what other during the week?
Well, Wednesday morning to work with you, get the agenda set.
Yep.
And then I don't think they would be doing anything in the posting and stuff, but perhaps finalizing everything and then so it's prepared so Beth can post it properly.
Yeah, Wednesday's fine. We can do that.
Do you need Thursday time, though?
Hmm?
Thursday.
I would start it on Wednesday. So Wednesday, Thursday, and Monday.
That's what I'm thinking. Okay, but Monday's the only one you want to slide to the other side of the day?
Yeah, if we can, that would be ideal.
Okay.
When I spoke with the government staffing company, they were nationwide. They wanted to know the duration, whether the person could work some of the time remotely, what were the -- how many hours per week, and what was the hourly pay that we were going to offer them. And so I'm sure that this Ultimate Staffing would probably wants to know the same thing.
Well, if you want, Peter explained to me that for what we're looking for, it's going to be somewhere in the range of paying them like $22 to $25 an hour. He thought that that would be the range.
Well, that makes sense.
So we're looking at 12 to 14 hours.
Right. I'm trying to keep it within the budget of what we have in that account. Yeah.
And you said it was 40% above that is what the company gets?
Yeah, it must be, yes, because he's going to -- we're going to be charged like $42 an hour, depending on what they pay them. But then we don't have to deal with any of the -- any issues with -- they're not our employee. They're under contract, basically. So when we're not pleased for any reason, we just tell him, and they handle that. And when we don't need it any longer, we just tell him, and then they handle that.
So I make a motion that Selectwoman Cash Melis contacts the staffing company and finds out the availability and so we can move forward and get somebody in here.
All right, a motion. Is there a second? None?
Second.
In a second. Motion in a second. Any further discussion? Anybody? None? All in favor? In unanimous. Next. Reprecincting due to the 2020 federal census. Beth, that was your request. Could you just give us a quick run? Everybody's got the paperwork on that. We got that -- I think we got that two weeks ago. Anybody got any questions for Beth, to the Town Clerk, as far as the reprecincting?
Motion to approve reprecincting based on 2020 census.
Second.
In a second. Any further discussion?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
What is the significance of the precincts? Why?
The Secretary of the Commonwealth, yesterday, on the federal census.
Yeah.
They, in 2010, they split the town. They gave up two precincts, and now it's a town group, 220,000 people. So we got split into two in 2010. And then in 2020, our numbers are just a little bit off, and they try to keep the numbers on as exact between the precincts, so our lines switch just a little bit beyond the area. So a few of the House members will move into the other precincts in order to --
Does it have any effect on voting whatsoever? I mean, would it allow the town to, let's just say, have voting here and maybe South Groveland at another location? But I don't understand what effect does it have, if anything? I mean, is it just they tell you to divide by two? I mean, I don't know.
They take a look at the type of people in the town and the population numbers, and they try to keep it evenly distributed everywhere. So they move the district lines around in order to keep your population and things focused. And that's all it is. We currently vote in one location to vote precincts. It doesn't really make that much of a difference.
Yeah.
When people come in, they just need to know.
They just need to know which precinct they are in so that they get into the right line on the side and put it into the right ballot box.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. All in favor? In unanimous. Thank you.
Do we have an original that we all need to sign?
I bet you Beth has it.
Do you have the original?
Sign.
There's one in your packet.
No, but we all have a copy. Is there an original that you want us all to sign?
No, you can take one of the ones out of the packet. That's fine.
It doesn't matter? Okay, so.
Okay. Why don't we do that now? Give it to her.
Great. Thank you.
What do I do with it?
Yes, one. The date --
Yeah, will you?
The date is wrong.
It's the date I gave it.
Okay, so that's okay, then?
Your date is today's date when you sign it.
Okay.
Okay.
Very good.
Because down below, it's -- well, it does say the wrong date of the meeting, so that is changed.
I know. Well, that's --
I can change that now.
You want to change it?
Yeah.
Thank you.
You'll bring it back to us?
Yes.
Does everybody want to give you the ones that you want to sign?
I'll collect back the ones we don't sign.
A request for the use of the town digital sign by Pentucket. This was a request by a couple of residences, a couple of residents. They're looking to promote a theater group at Pentucket. The production premieres on November 4th. They would like to get something on our town sign out the front of the town hall to promote the event. I think that, Jason, you spoke with them, and Kathy, I think.
Yes, I already posted it.
Jason, I think, already did it.
Go ahead.
I already posted it.
It's already posted.
So we'll approve it post -- posted.
Go.
It's good.
Okay. Already done. I don't think we need a vote on that.
No.
Already done. Email from Principal Day asking if he would like to provide a flyer to distribute to Bagnell advising parents of the town meeting.
It's just an informational thing, unless someone has an objection to a flyer going home before a special town meeting.
I don't see any reason why not.
I think it'd be helpful to getting people out. It's going to be the beginning of the holiday season.
Phenomenal idea.
Yeah. Okay.
Really appreciate Jim Day suggesting it.
And I think Rebecca has already kind of corresponded on this, so.
Nice of them to step up to do that.
Thank you. Thanks, Rebecca. Good.
We have update on the zero waists reduction in barrels.
Okay, so I didn't have anything that had to go into the packet, but I did need to point out that we do need to provide notification of the reduction in barrels and the start date of it. And initially, I know, Bill, you had suggested that we use the tax bill, but the next tax bill won't go out till January one, which was when we were anticipating implementing the reduction. So my question to the board is.
We missed the last tax bill.
Yes, we did. Do you want to roll the date to February one, and so it can go out with the January one tax bill? And Rebecca, you're welcome to chime into, because you've been talking, she's been speaking with Courtney from Waste with Zero as well.
It's not effective until February one for zero waste anyways, because we were late to sign the contract.
Ah ha.
So it already is February first, 2022.
Thank you. So can we agree that we'll put it in a little flyer in the tax bill?
Sure.
And it's the most efficient way to do it.
I thought it was a good idea, too.
How about, how about contacting the Light Department and have them add it to the bottom of the light, light bills that come out every month?
Okay.
Yeah, that might be good, too, because then we can get some, a large coverage repetitive.
We also should put it on the website and put it on the board.
Rebecca's writing this down. Rebecca, are you going to reach out to the Light Department? Thank you. I don't want to have us all calling.
Okay. The American Rescue Dangerous.
Yeah, did, did we vote on a number of barrels?
Um, yes, we did.
Yes, we did. Did I vote for that?
Nope.
No.
No. Okay, I still don't, all right. You hear, you just voted against it.
No.
I don't remember. I thought we just talked about the price of the plastic bags, was that resolved?
Yes.
Yes.
Six grand?
Rebecca has resolved that.
Instead of thirteen?
Somewhat, yes.
Seven, yeah, I think it was seven.
American Rescue Plan Act, this was submitted by the building inspector, but he asked to have this table. They weren't quite ready, I guess.
So I make a motion to table?
Second.
Motion to table, in a second, any, no, no discussion on the table, all in favor? In unanimous. Ruth Revard to discuss financial management review. Ruth, are you prepared?
I sure am. So I am Ruth Revard, I live at Six Berrywood Lane, and I'm a member of the Finance Board. So the Finance Board made a recommendation recently to the Board of Selectmen that the town request the State's Division of Local Services, known as the DLS, to come in to conduct a financial management review of our town, and I'm just here to have a brief discussion about that. Just so that everybody knows, the DLS is a state service that promotes, according to their website, they promote sound, they promote sound municipal finance management practices and support local officials by providing guidance, training, and oversight. Financial review such as this is viewed as a positive exercise, it's not an audit, it is not a punitive event, it's a state resource that's available to us, and it's free. So just to bring the residents and the employees up to date, I'm going to read a brief statement that the Finance Board wrote to the Board of Selectmen earlier this month requesting this review. "We believe that the time for a review is opportune, given anticipated key hires, including the town administrator and the treasurer. With the DLS working closely with municipalities across the Commonwealth, they're abreast of the best practices of the industry and can help us prioritize tasks and create a timeline for goals. Based on a discussion with Zach Blake, who is the Chief of the Financial Management Resources Bureau, the review process is highly regarded and should not be considered punitive in any way, as even the best-run municipalities request this review as a way to seek continual improvement. Over the past ten years, Mr. Blake estimates that the DLS has completed roughly three hundred and thirty reviews. He also indicated that he recently reached out to our town, and he does recommend that we partner. The Finance Board sees this review as the most efficient path to, one, ensure that our staff has the tools that they need to complete their job as accurately and efficiently as possible, two, to ensure that the taxpayers of Groveland are getting the best value for their money, and three, to allow for aligned goals and priorities between the Board of Selectmen, the Finance Department, the Finance Board, and other town causes. We would like to clearly and expressly state that we're not seeking a review to be critical of any current practices. Rather, it simply makes compelling financial sense to take advantage of this free service that's available to us. And again, we really believe the timing is right, given that we have our first town administrator, and, you know, the DLS can help us just really map out our goals, create a roadmap, and, you know, see what resources we need to accomplish those kind of tasks. Anything that we recommend, that they recommend, we don't need to do. They come to us, they make recommendations, and we have discussions on what we want to implement, implement, and when, and how. The Finance Board does urge you to act on this recommendation as soon as possible, because there is a wait now of several months to conduct a review. But we think this is a really exciting time for Groveland, we're really happy to be a part of it, and we're happy to be of further service to the residents and the stakeholders of the town. So I just want to make sure that everybody knew that this was something that we're interested in. We would like to move forward if possible, and if you have any questions on any research that we've done or any conversations that we've had, I'll try to field them. Otherwise, I would be happy to put you into contact with the DLS, and you can hopefully make a vote that you get into their pipeline.
Any questions for Ruth?
Mr. Chairman, can I put a motion on the floor for, so that we can have discussion?
Go ahead.
I would like to make a motion that the Board of Selectmen contacts the Massachusetts Division of Local Services and requests a financial management review for our town at their soonest opportunity.
Second.
Motion in a second, any further discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Before we request that, I would inquire whether or not they would provide us with an engagement letter with the scope of the review, so that we know in writing upfront what it is we're requesting. It would be beneficial to have a outside source come in here, but I would want to know what the scope of that review would entail. I've been involved with many, many examinations over my career, and they're extremely time-consuming. So, yes, you can bring them in here and go through everything. We need to know how many man-hours that's going to take away from existing employees, and we need to time-budget for all of that. We need to know their, what field work they require, what reports they need. We really need to know what we're getting into before we sign up for that, and.
So I.
The reason I, I want to inquire about exactly the scope of the review is in the process of going forward with a new TA position, I don't want to be premature, I know you want, you want us to get in the queue, and maybe it's wise for us to get in line, if it's going to take three years, six months to just get them in here, so we'll be proactive and be ahead of the curve instead of behind the curve. But maybe there's a limited scope, maybe there's a full-blown, they go through everything, but that could take tremendous, a tremendous amount of man-hours and work to work with them in the process. So we have a new treasurer, we're going to need a new assistant treasurer, so I'd like to see those pieces in place prior to bringing them in.
Can I answer? Can I give you a little information based on that?
Sure.
So based on my conversation with the Chief of the, the Technical Assistance Bureau that I spoke with, he said that generally they have one or two people come in, they meet with various employees, and this would be basically the TA, the treasurer, the assessor, and the accountant, the finance team. And he said that they take them, it's a very discreet process, they have an interview that is approximately one hour of the employee's time. And then after that, they get all of our information, which is online, they get audits, they go off-site, and they compile the data, they, they take information, they take trends, and they write up a report. The whole process takes a couple of months, but most of it's done by the DLS team off-site, and it's about an hour's time for an employee. Maybe they have some follow-up questions. They, they would meet with, you know, a select board member, they would meet with a finance board member, they would meet with, I don't know who else. If you look online at the DLS website, you can see examples of these reviews that they publish. They're really informative, they're comprehensive, they're really helpful, and they speak to what other towns do and how they do it. Some of the reviews, if you look at them, what's published, some of them are first-time reviews, some of them are a follow-up review, where they, you know, if, you might get into the queue and you have your first review, and then a few years later, you revisit that, you look at the recommendations that you made, that they made at the time, you see what's been implemented, and you re-prioritize, and you move forward from there. But it sounded, based on the conversation that I had, that it is not a time-consuming practice. You know, they're, they're really looking for all of our towns to do well and to succeed. So I think that they, that they're professionals, they do it well, and they're respective of that time on the employees.
So, so it's not similar to what we pay CPA firms to do in, with internal control evaluations and.
No, it's not an audit.
Finance, it's not, it's not an internal audit of sorts, it's just management departments, just sort of a functionality.
Yeah, and they, and they might say, so, you know, this is how, so, so these are the reports that you look at, this is how this town does it, this is how this town does it. Maybe you want to think about updating your software, one package or another. Maybe you want to have this person have some software training to do this, to do this more efficiently or that more efficiently. If, if you look at, I'd be happy to pull one or two of the reports that they've done and send it to you, if you want to look at any of the reports that they've written. But no, it's not an audit, it's more a outline of best practices across the Commonwealth. And they help us be accurate, transparent, efficient. Again, their, their tagline is that they promote municipal finance management practices and support local officials by providing guidance, training, and oversight. But it's all in the mode of transparency, efficiency, accuracy, improvement, improve practices, that's all.
Thank you.
And it's free.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so we had this done twenty-five years ago when we switched to a financial director, and it was really useful to the first financial director that we hired, because it was kind of like a bit of a roadmap, you know, on things that could be improved as time permits. So it's not an intrusive, it's not meant to say, I gotcha. It's very supportive, it's very collaborative. Department of Local Services, I think, is one of our best resources, they have all our financial data online, they look at our trends all the time, they know how much we have in reserves, they know how much free cash we've spent, they know what our tax rates are, they know most everything they need to know about us. And I think when they interview, they just get a feeling for how everything is flowing, and, I don't know, we've all gotten the emails of financial management best practices, there's seminars you can attend if you want to online, Selectman McDonald, if you want to know more about their practices, but it's totally helpful. There's, there's nothing hurtful about the process, it's, it's a great thing, it's a wonderful resource.
Bill?
You answered one of my questions, was it's free, and you said there, right now, it's a seven-month backlog?
No, no, but I think he said two to three months.
Two to three months? So we get in the queue, two to three months from now, we decide we don't want to, we change our minds, it's no harm, no foul, right? But in the meantime, I'm all about process improvement. It doesn't mean that people have done things wrong in the past, it only means that we can do things better, maybe. And that leads to more efficiency. So wherever we can pick up a dime or a nickel through process improvements, lighten someone's stress load, make the job easier to accomplish, count me in.
Included in this is, is it, are they going to look at salaries of employees?
I think that they'll look at whatever, if it gets brought up, and if we ask them to look at that. If you, yes, that would probably come up.
I don't know how that would be a process improvement.
They might recommend that you go about it a certain way. I read one review that they did for another town where they did recommend applying for a grant for a salary review, so they did recommend that one town do it, and they recommended how they do it.
Okay.
And, well, I don't want to get off topic. That's something that we talked about last year, and I recall the Finance Board being open to reviewing, to doing a salary study. We just wanted to have a TA in place to do the salary study that we, so that we'd be able to follow through with it and have somebody implement it, and I guess that's what comes along the line of this review, is what are the priorities? There's only so much time in a day and time in a week, so what are the priorities? There was a lot of talk last year about tax title, if we were going about that right. And so what are the priorities, what's more urgent, how do we really map out our next three, six, twelve months and come up with a, you know, a mid-to-longer-term plan? And where do we, where do we start? That's how I see this running.
Okay, we got a motion in a, in a, in a second, any further discussion? None, all in favor of the review, financial management review, all in favor? In unanimous. Thank you.
Great, thank you. So would you like me to supply you with contact information? Do you want me to reach out to him and to tell my contact there that the board has agreed to move this forward? Is this the letter that we received from them before?
Uh, I think this is the one that you sent, and it's got Blake at his email.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's on there, that's the memo that I sent.
Contact information here already, right?
So would you like me to reach out to him and say, how do we make the next step, or do you?
No, I think it'd be best if Rebecca does, just because she needs to schedule it within the hours of when she's available, when the accountant's available, and she's here in the town hall, so I think it'd probably be best if she does. So I'm going to hand this to her, so she can get that taken care of.
And if we need a letter or something, we'll just drop by and sign whatever you put in front of us, or Ed can sign it for us. Do we need to make a motion, do you think, to let Ed just sign it for us? I'm all right with that, if there's a letter or something that has to go.
We, we should sign that, if we want to, under the Board of Selectmen.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Next was a redistricting letter that we received from Representative Lenny Mira. He wanted, wanted to add Groveland to the signer of this. This was a redistricting that's taken place in the House of Representatives in the Senate. And he wanted, he's requesting that Groveland, Mermack, and West Newbury stay in the Second Essex District, and he alludes to the fact that, you know, in the middle of a high school project, building project, and he was just looking for our support to add our name to the letter. Seems reasonable. I want to make a motion to add a name to the letter, Representative Mira.
There's, there's like no downside to this, right?
What's that?
I mean, we're asking you to just stay put in the district that we're in, right? That's what we're saying?
We're asking, he's, he's asking that Groveland, Mermack, and West Newbury stay in the Second Essex District. Right now, the way it looks is that they were. Right now, the way it looks is that they were, uh, they would be separated in some way. And he, he's requesting that, uh, because of the three towns, they should be under the same state representative. Seems reasonable. Dan, you had a question?
To split us up, we have commonality, a school district, that's huge, you know? 60% of the budget or more, you know? So it'd be foolish for the Beacon Hill to bifurcate us, you know, or, you know, chop off one town, so absolutely, I'm with, uh, Lenny Mira on that. I mean, for them to cut it in half or a third or whatever they do would just, uh, be foolish.
Well, I think they were looking at, and adding, adding his, his district down, uh, north-east of Boston a little bit and, uh...
We have nothing to come with them, we're Merrimack Valley people.
Who we are.
We are, we're, we're not Boston.
And I think it was, uh...
We're not even North Shore, we're Merrimack Valley.
Yeah, we'd be, this area would be carved up by about four different representatives. So, uh, we need a motion to, uh, support, uh, add Groveland to Lenny Mira's, uh, letter.
Make a motion?
Make a motion to, uh, endorse Lenny Mira's, uh, letter.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? Go ahead, Bill.
Yes, um, I got, I got the email too, and right away, um, I signed on to the letter. But now, I've been thinking about it more and more, and I'm thinking this is the wrong, this is the wrong way. Right now, time and time again on Beacon Hill, Lenny Mira gets outvoted by everyone else in the state when it comes to, um, getting things for the Pennsyltucket region. Time and time again, he loses because he's one vote against many. So, uh, in my mind, if we have more representation, if we have three or four delegates that go to Beacon Hill to represent Pennsyltucket, it gives us a greater chance of success that we may actually get paid 100% of the transportation cost like the state's supposed to. It may give us a chance that we may get more funding for schools that haven't been new in 60 years. It may give us a better chance, based on greater representation, that we have more of a voice on Beacon Hill than we do now. So I've kind of gone 180 on that thinking and thinking that more is better, not less.
Okay, Dan, uh, yeah, Dan, uh, how about Jason?
Yes, um, two things. One, I thought when the redistricting was going to be done, West Newbury, Merrimack, and, um, Groveland, we're still going to have one, uh, person. I thought it was Collins, um, but I don't remember, and I can't seem to find it here. But I really think it's a moot point because on Lenny's email, it says, "This proposal is not final and the committee on redistricting will consider testimony on changes until 5:00 PM Monday night, October 18th."
Uh-oh.
So we're a little late to the show.
Done it again.
And he says here that, uh, "Under the proposed plan, Pennsyltucket would be represented by three state, separate state representatives and two state senators."
Well, so they've already voted on it, do you think?
Well, we could, uh...
That's a huge advantage to us. We have three voices now in Beacon Hill instead of one. I think that's, that's a positive for our community, not a negative.
I don't know.
Well, I'm not sure that, I'm not sure about that.
I, I guess, I guess get concerned if we get lumped in with like a big city, that we get lost. You know what I mean? That would be my concern, that we're a small town and I'd like to be grouped with small towns that have the same or similar kinds of concerns.
Dan, go ahead.
Yeah, I hear what you're saying, uh, Selectman O'Neill, but I, I just think it's a divided conquer. I mean, it's just going to, it's going to dilute, uh, our interest if we're tacked on to say, you know, Hebron or something, you know? Just we're diluted. So we vote as a block and we sink or swim on that. I think, I think we have to vote as a block, you know? It's, there's a concentration of power and, uh, he, he might be getting voted down because he's a minority, he's a, I think he's a Republican, you know? This is a one-party state, which is a, a shame. That's a whole nother subject for another day, but, uh, in a one-party system, yeah, protruding nail gets hammered down. So, uh, you know, I don't know that we can change that, but he's, uh, outstanding in my mind, he represents the district. I think we stick together and, uh, stay the course. And, uh, you know, and I'd like to know what Merrimack thought and, uh, you know, Merrimack, yeah, Merrimack, it, uh...
Already missed the deadline.
You know, well, maybe they didn't vote on it, who knows? Maybe they just delayed.
Well, we can send a support. Bill, you had something? Go ahead.
Yeah, and, and speaking with, you know, folks, and I've been working on the, on this new high school, middle school for the last six years, and speaking with them, it's clearly evident that the inner cities have more representation. And when it comes to doling out the education dollars, they always trump our representatives because we just don't have enough voice there. A, a, and that's what I hear time and time and time again from the folks over there in the school district, that if we had more representation of Beacon Hill, but these Boston's and the Springfield's and the Brocktons and the Fall Rivers and the New Bedford's, they have greater representation and therefore they sway those education dollars and all the other dollars that the state provides to their districts and away from ours. And it's just a fact of numbers. It, it's sad, um, but it's true. And, and to Kathy's point, this whole discussion is rendered moot by the fact that we're eight days late in a do, yeah, a, a day late and a dollar late to the party.
Maybe they put it off, I mean, you know, maybe they didn't do anything, you know, downtown.
Well, we could, we could still vote to, uh, to, to support them or not support them. There's a motion on the floor to support it.
Of course we support them.
Uh, all in favor?
Yeah, mine is great.
Yeah, three in favor, opposed, two, three to two in favor.
I missed the deadline, though, I think it's a moot point.
Uh, Groveland Congregational Church, they're looking for permission for a sign in Perry Park, uh, on Perry Park, the Perry Park comment from, uh, indicating their, uh, their fair that they're having on November 12th from 4 to 8, November 13th from 9 to 3. They're looking for permission to, uh, also to put it on the town sign out front.
Make a motion to approve the permission for a sign and to put it on our digital sign, if Jason is able to figure it out again.
Second.
There's a, uh, permission to replace a sign, an A-frame sign on Perry Park, comment from October 29th to the 13th of November.
Yep.
Uh, and, uh, is there a second on that motion?
Yes, there was.
Uh, any further discussion? Dan?
I mean, it's just for a fair, it's not religious, separation of churches and state, you know?
Right, it's the, it's the, um, annual winter fair, yeah.
It's our annual, uh, our annual fair, uh, all right, there for the church.
I'm good with that.
All right, go ahead.
Do we have any contact information?
Uh, I do have it somewhere.
All right, get it to me and then I'll, so I can contact them on the specifics.
Tracy's usually the, Tracy's usually the one that comes with the, um, this application.
Yeah, it wasn't on the, um, paperwork.
I'll be telling, see what, who...
Have you got any digital, uh, pictures that they want on the sign?
Okay.
Or whatnot?
Yeah, we'll get it.
And, uh, you give me the information, I'll put it on the sign board.
Digital picture.
Okay, we'll get that to you.
You're good at this now.
It's easy.
Consideration of stipends, given the Department of Revenue opinion in the article that the town meeting votes, does the board wish to, uh, take a vote on this? Kathy, you requested that to be put on?
Yes, and I know it's not a popular topic, but I do feel that, um, we're operating outside the bounds of a town meeting vote and outside the bounds of, um, the article we voted town meeting and, and outside the bounds of the mass general law. And I feel that, um, we do need to end the stipends now. We have an, a special town meeting coming up in December, so if there's some, something in a salary that needs to be adjusted, it's not that far off to make that adjustment. I, I just, everything I've researched, everything I've looked at says we can't do this. And it makes sense because why do we bother to go to an annual town meeting and set the salaries and then vote an article that we've just set all the salaries if we're then going to take more money? And so I think moving forward, um, I know we went through a really rough patch here and we did things that we thought would be helpful, and then it kind of snowballed and got to be a little bit more money than I think any of us envisioned it would be. Um, and so it has kind of put a, put a dent in the budget this year, and I think we have to take our, our fiduciary responsibility and say, okay, let's end the stipends for now. If there's a department that has a specific, um, issue with understaffing or extra hours needed, I think we can address that without a stipend. And we can address it well. And I think, you know, hindsight is always 20/20. We should have done that back at the annual town meeting and we did not. So I think it's time to kind of make this wrong into a right. So I would move that, um, we send a letter asking all departments to stop the stipends. I mean, I think we voted them all, so do we need to rescind a letter or do we just unvote them? I'll make a motion to rescind the stipends we voted.
Okay, a motion, um, is there a second?
Second.
And a second, further discussion? Jason?
What stipends are you referring to?
Well, that's a good question, I'm never quite sure. So I think that we still have, I don't know if we have any left. Do we have one left with the accountant any longer?
That's for the CARES Act, and I believe once the CARES Act ends, that ends.
But is it being paid through the CARE, if it's being paid by the CARES Act, then it's not a stipend, that's fine. If it's a, if it's a stipend, it's coming from somebody else's salary line, and that would be the problem. We're going to unbalance a salary, so that's, that's why we have to address it at the town meeting. If something has to be done, it has to be done through the town meeting.
I agree, and that's, that's why I went to the, um, Council on Aging Board.
Yes.
Which theirs is going to stop when Maria comes back. And since we voted it and we moved forward with everything, I say it goes through the term.
Well...
Moving forward, we just no longer, uh...
If I could, though, we voted that stipend because there was not a director in place and the stipend was predicated on being in place until the director is hired. And I understand that another circumstance presented, but I do think that we have to move towards something that is connected to hours and hours worked and, and that needs to be addressed. And again, I think that, I think these...
I agree, I spoke with the director and the, uh, chair, and they both agreed. But like I said, it's in place and it's going for two more weeks, and then it ends. And moving forward, they'll do the same as we do, like they did with this here. That's the same that we did. So moving forward, there will be no more stipends unless we vote it.
Well, if you want to make a friendly amendment that all stipends end in two weeks, two weeks I could live with, that, that's fine, but we do need to, we need to pick a stopping point here and just stop.
I can't, I can't do that without knowing clearly when the CARES Act stops. Because I wouldn't do that to, uh...
Here's the concern I have, is that when you pay, the salary is connected to the hours worked. And the hours aren't being, if the hours are being worked in addition, then you can charge those hours to the CARES Act. That's right in the CARES Act. So I don't understand...
Clarification on that.
Right, because I know with like, within the Board of Health, we have had hours that are connected to the whole COVID, to the CARES Act, to the contact tracing. We're able to charge those to the CARES Act. So if the hours are connected directly to the management of the CARES Act money, um, outside of your regular hours that you're already salaried for, yes, you can pay, you can charge it to the CARES Act. But I don't think we can, I don't think we can legally have a, a stipend for CARES Act.
Jason, you want to table that until you get more information on it?
I think it would be wise.
Make a motion to table?
I'll make a motion to table.
Okay. And a second, a motion to table?
I'll second that.
And a second. Uh, all in favor of tabling for more information on the stipends? All in favor?
I'll follow up with Ellen.
Three in favor, opposed, in favor. Thank you. Bring that up the next meeting, Jason? Table to the next meeting.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
Can I comment on, uh, um, the information we get for the next meeting? Can I have a list of who and how much and?
Sure.
What are the circumstances or what were the circumstances to necessitate the stipend? And I'd also like to know the people that received the stipend, what do they think about it? Because if the workload is still what it was when they received the stipend, they're going to take it away from them? If you did that to me, I'd say, fine, you do it then, okay? So is there still an existing need? You know, I just don't think we can cut blank, just like take it away.
Can you get that, Jason?
Yeah.
I, I can help you with that if you need it. Okay.
In response to Selectman McDonald, I just want to say one thing, that this is not, um, intended to be something that is adversarial or taking away from anybody.
I think that that's beyond the scope of the tabling, uh...
Oh, that's true, it's table.
I think you're out of order on that.
Well, actually, no.
Old business.
Excuse me, point of order, Mr. Chairman. We voted on the table and then he started another discussion and then you ruled me out of order.
Uh, he was...
On his discussion point that you allowed him to have.
All right, okay, enough. All right, next order of business. Town hall, Monday night hours. Uh, we had, uh, we had voted to, uh, open up the Monday night hours and, uh, there was, a question came up on that. Uh, according to our bylaws, we, uh, the only hours that are required under the bylaws were the town clerk and the treasurer. And, uh, I, I think that there were, the intent was that, uh, there would also be others included in that, but they weren't covered by the bylaws. And I know you're fluent in the bylaws.
Yeah, right.
Uh, but I think the, uh, in, in the past, we had building inspector, we had town assessor, and I, I think we also had veterans agent, but I couldn't think of who else, uh, we had on that list. Anybody recall?
Well, I, I know the building inspector showed up this past Monday night for his office hours.
Yes, he did.
For the Monday night hours.
Was it contractual or was it because of the bylaw? I mean...
Well, the two were, were the bylaw, so, uh, the town clerk and the treasurer were by bylaw and, uh, unless the selectman, uh, requested that the others, uh, but we need a, uh, we need to decide who the others that we want open on Monday nights.
Town administrator.
No.
Town planner and economic developer.
I, I think it was just a couple of business offices open, Mr. Chairman, and then there was, used to be like a select board meeting, sometimes another meeting going on. And that kind of lent kind of a busyness to the Monday night affair, but I don't recall that there was other offices. I, I don't even recall the veterans agent being here on a Monday night, but maybe that was part of what the agent tried to do coming by once in a while on a Monday night.
Well, I think he might have been here one, uh, uh, one Monday night a month.
Something like that.
But it, yeah, he was always in the back room.
Okay.
But, uh...
But that was all.
We, we probably need to take a vote on who else to include in there besides, uh, the two that are listed in the bylaws. Suggestions? Kathy, any suggestions?
No, I don't, I don't understand why, I mean, the treasurer's office, I think, was open to take collections. I mean, that makes sense to give people a Monday night or if they couldn't get down during the, the day. And then, um, the town clerk, this, the same point, you know, people that needed to find something or sign, get sworn in or something like that, that's what that was for. So I don't, I don't, I don't see that any other offices would be needed. I think the building inspector has always had a Monday night.
Building inspector was...
Always been there, I think Patsy was always there.
Building inspector was always included so that he could get...
Yeah, Patsy was always there too, before the, um, before Sam. So, yeah, I think that, I think that's always been the arrangement with the building inspector that we hire, that he is available on a Monday night for people.
Um, how about, uh...
Assessor, maybe?
You had something?
Didn't the assessor used to be here?
Uh, I, yes, I thought so.
Back in the day, Debbie Webster?
No, I don't think so, because, no, because she took a second job when, when she didn't get a raise, when she was working nights at the IRS. So, no, I don't think the assessor's office was always open Monday nights. But if you want to look into it some more and get back to us, go ahead.
I mean, is it a matter of good service and convenience for people in town that if you work all day or you can't make it, you know, and you come one night, it's open late? I mean...
That was the purpose.
I think that's kind of the purpose, so somebody can grab you on one night a week and get a, whatever, dog license or marriage license or pay their tax bill. So it was customer service, you know, for people that are working eight to four, nine to five and can't get here. So it was customer service, you know, for people that are working eight to four, nine to five, and can't get here. You know, a lot of things you can do online now, so it's, but some people are still-
All right, so you want to include the building inspector, town administrator?
Yeah.
We don't have one yet, but-
Yeah, let's bring her into it. Give her some late evening hours.
And you want to include assessors?
Yeah.
I'm not in favor of including anybody other than what's in the bylaw and what's in our agreement with the building inspector. So if you want to get more information on why any other people have to be here, I think it should be an agenda item and not under old business. There should have been information given.
Well, the reason-
I thought you were just revisiting it to say whether or not we had opened the town hall on Monday night.
Well, the reason that we put it under old business, because we already decided to open up the town hall, and then researching the bylaws, it's just the two, the treasurer's office and the clerk, town clerk, and so those are the only ones that by bylaw are supposed to be here on Monday nights, but we could decide to have others. Bill, you have something?
No, other than those two, I see no reason to add anyone else. It's never been that way, so I don't know what necessitates the sudden need to change.
Can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
I'm just kind of curious, like, these bylaws have been on the books for a really long time. And, you know, the town grows and changes, and I'm wondering, I'm kind of curious, I don't know whether that probably wouldn't come under the municipal financial best practices, so it would be maybe through the Mass Municipal Association. If we could reach out and find out what other towns are doing, because part of me thinks, you know, I don't want people just sitting here on Monday night and nobody here. Jason and I were here Monday night, and we were pretty much alone.
Sam who said, "Isn't the town hall supposed to be open, where is everybody?"
Right, so I guess I'm kind of wondering if this is maybe kind of an outdated thing.
Well, why don't we leave it at the way it is, and then we'll, we can check with other municipalities and see what they're doing. Okay, Fall Town Meeting update. Was it December 8th, was it?
6th.
The 6th, I know, it was November 8th, and now we can't drop the 8th.
Yeah, now it's December 6th. And that was so that we could get, we could get some information out of what we needed out of the treasurer's office, and the town clerk was also requested that we push it back to the-
Correct.
Anything further on that, Beth? What's that? That's right, thank you. Oh, did you want that paperwork, so you didn't have to stick around?
No.
Oh, all right. I think we're almost done, anyway. Update on water and sewer highway contract negotiations?
Kathy and I met with Ken.
Ken, yep.
We discussed some things, and we agreed that we're going to meet again Thursday, along with Brian.
Well, I won't be there, you and Rebecca.
It'll be me, Rebecca, and Brian to go over the actual contract and make some firm decisions to bring back to the board for discussion.
Okay.
Overall, I think it was a fairly positive meeting. I think that there's still obviously the financial articles to decide, but we recapped everything, and the only thing that we still not sure about, and you're going to check about this, sweatshirts and T-shirts and water and sewer, does anybody here remember them asked, they asked for more, right?
Yes.
They did.
Bill made a big joke about it. Getting more shirts was not a deal breaker.
What was that?
More shirts and sweatshirts for the water and sewer department.
The safety gear, yeah.
Yeah, safety gear.
So Rebecca has the tables now, so you can just pop it in.
So you think you'll have that wrapped up soon?
God, I hope so. But we'll find out, because we're going to have to meet as a board in executive session to make the decision on what we're going to try to do.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. Is that something that would be a short executive session we could have before the next meeting?
I think it'll be relatively short, when, after I discuss it with Brian, I'll have more information.
All right.
I would agree, yes, I think it-
Okay, selectman's time, Dan, you got anything?
Yeah, it's coyote hunting season again, till March 8th, so. And we have a wildlife management area in town, and people might see pickup trucks parked here and there, and shotgun blasts and deer seasons upon us. So, I don't know, don't be alarmed. Just, if you're a hunter, it's pheasants and quail. And Crane's Wildlife Management Area, they politically call it a politically correctness, and it's a wildlife management area, but it's really a state sanctioned hunting, happy hunting zone. So, right here in Groveland and West Newbury, 2,700 acres. And my sentiment on coyotes, it's an invasive species, like milfoil and the Norway rat. So I don't like them. Four of them ate my cat, so get after them, thank you.
Bill, you got anything?
Yeah, a couple of things. First and foremost, to the young woman that was injured last week, the thoughts and prayers of myself and my family go out to that young woman and their family for a speedy recovery. And just a reminder, a general reminder for everyone out there, that Sunday, October 31st, is Halloween. There's going to be a lot of kids out there. Most of the kids are not on leashes, keep that in mind. Kids have a mind of their own. Sometimes they get excited, they dart into streets. Please, please drive carefully, the jail time you save may be your own. Thank you.
Jason?
Yeah, and I'd just like to point out that Congregational Church is doing trunk and treat on the 30th, and Bagnell is doing it on the 31st. So it can give you an option where it's a little bit safer to go to.
Kathy?
Just a couple of things, I didn't, I'm not quite sure with our agenda when you're supposed to ask for agenda items for the next meeting. Is this the time, or is it under another thing?
It, anytime from now until Wednesday. And Wednesday will, as soon as you can get it in.
Okay, so, Selectman McDonald, when we discussed the reorganization of the board, said he was open to having some policies and rules that we could all agree on to make our meetings operate a little more effectively and efficiently. So I would like to ask that we have that on the agenda for our next meeting.
Policies and procedures for the board?
Yes. I would like that, I think that would make a big change in how this board has been operating. I feel that personally, I have issued to each board member my response to a very slanderous attack on myself, on my character, on my integrity, on the work I do for this town, and how I conduct myself. And I don't want to have to do that kind of a response ever again. I don't think anybody who serves the town does so to cause any harm to the town. I come into this meeting trying to do good things, and I anticipate that my board members are working with me as a team, and not trying to undercut or do things outside the meeting that would cause me personal harm. So I felt the need to respond. I take a lot on the chin, and I don't respond, but I'd ask that each of you please take a moment to read my response, because I haven't had to do that in the 25 years that I've served on boards in this town.
Okay, and we do need at some point to schedule an executive session to deal with a harassment complaint. If someone could, a member of the board could let me know when they can meet to deal with complaint. And sometime within the next two or three weeks, we can schedule something for that. And that's at the request of Town Council, that once you get the complaint, you have to deal with it, so.
Mr. Chair, can we, I mean, would it be possible to do that on the next meeting, or have we got too much on the docket?
We probably have too much on the docket.
We'll probably have the draft warrant.
At that meeting?
I would think so, we're going to have something formalized by then, we better, right?
Yeah, so far, I don't know of anything that's on the agenda for-
Beth has her hand up.
The next meeting, you got something?
Town clerk.
Yes, Beth. Could you drop that?
Can you vote to have the special town meeting? Because I don't think you've actually taken a vote for that event.
You didn't vote?
Oh.
We're both pending availability in the bag now.
And now it's available.
Okay. Let's go back to the Fall Town Meeting update, and we can, under old business, and we can take a, we can take a vote on December 6th.
All right, I'll make a motion, we have a special town meeting on December 6th at-
7:00 PM?
7:00 PM.
Second.
And Beth, when do you need the, all the warrants in?
14 days prior to.
14 days prior.
Not counting weekends and holidays, all right? Or do we?
14 days, but it has to be, it has to be signed in public, for the general public, the weekend before that.
But we can count the holidays and Thanksgiving and that, that's okay? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, there's a motion to, for December 6th, 7:00 PM. Is there, for the town meeting, is there a second on it?
A second?
There was a second. All in favor? Unanimous. It's set. One more.
Kathy, I will double check with the Secretary of State on Sunday's schedule, and if you let me know anything differently.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Correspondence. Letter from the American Legion for Veterans Day Observants. We got a letter from Commander Dave Tuttle. There'll be a Veterans Day service November 11th, 10:30. They'll meet inside the fire station, providing a fitting observant for Veterans Day, and Jason has volunteered to give a 30-minute talk.
Yes, yes, I did, and I already posted it on the signed board as well.
Okay. Time for that. That's 10:30 on Veterans Day, November 11th. Also, correspondence regarding special act. Also, a letter, a letter to the treasurer, collector applicant, and a response from select board member Kathy Casanelles. And-
I think the special act might require- I think the special act might require us to do something. I don't know if we need to do it this meeting or the next meeting.
It, I think we should get, I think we should get that back as soon as possible. There was six questions, and they're pretty simple. We could just go over those, if somebody wants to weigh in. This came from the town attorney. In the review, following questions and issues, it is anticipate, is it anticipated that the current finance director will continue to work for the town? If so, in what capacity? We don't have one.
Right.
Will the offices of accountant, treasurer, collector, principal assessor exist?
Say that one more time?
Yes.
Yes, we have all those.
Will they be appointed for a term of years, subject to removal after a hearing, or will they serve at the pleasure of the board?
They serve at the pleasure of the board, they're appointed.
I thought they were one-year appointments.
Well, yes, but I mean, it's not a contract.
It's not a term of years, one-year contract, right?
No, it's not a contract.
They're at will.
It's at will, that's what I'm trying to say, yeah, so I think-
Yeah, we voted that before the fiscal year.
Pleasure of the board.
That's what I thought, yeah.
Be the answer?
What's that?
It doesn't sound good, does it?
It doesn't sound good, but unfortunately, they're an employee at will, I think, is what we're saying.
I'd like to rephrase that.
It doesn't sound good.
It doesn't sound good, pleasure of the board, it's, they're employees at will.
No, they're not the pleasure of the board, they're one-year appointments.
Yeah? Are you sure?
Yeah, we vote, we're supposed to vote them every year.
We do vote and appoint them.
It doesn't mean we can't remove them within that year. They're appointed for the budgetary period, doesn't mean they're not at-will employees. I think that's, there's a distinction there.
Yeah.
Are they at-will employees or not? I mean, it's not a, you know, it's like how you're pregnant or not.
Actually, the personnel bylaw, they do have, you have to have cause, I believe, you can't just. I think you'd have to look at the personnel bylaw, I think Chairman Watson is correct. We do appoint them for one year. We do appoint them, and maybe other towns don't, maybe-
So they're not at-will, we need cause?
But it's not a contractual agreement for a year, that's a different-
Here's our bylaw.
There's a difference there, it's not a one-year contract.
Exactly.
Otherwise, you say, "I want the other 11 months, you let me go."
Well, they're appointed the same as boards and committees.
But we could dismiss them too.
Go ahead, Dan. Yeah, I think that's the distinction. We do have the right to dismiss them, even though we appoint them. If we put them down as appointed for a full term, a full year, then that's like telling them that they have a job for a year, and that's not necessarily the case. So it's pretty much at the will of the board.
No, we voted to appoint them, every year we voted them.
And we do, we continue to reappoint them every year. But it's not a guarantee that they're going to work for that entire year.
Right, or maybe we just need to ask council to clarify.
Appointment does not constitute a contract, either verbal or written. And there are, in the bylaws, and the personnel bylaws, a, there's a policy of process that you have to go through, written warnings, you know, verbal warnings.
Correct.
So, again, they're kind of an employee at will.
Subject to the hair bar.
Yep.
Okay, we'll get that, we got a couple more. Who will be the appointing slash supervisory authority for such positions?
We are.
TA.
Be the-
HR Director.
Well, you-
But is that including the TA?
No, the Board of Selectmen is the appointing authority.
The Board of Selectmen, the appointing and supervisory capacity would be the town administrator?
Correct.
That, yeah.
Yes.
Will the employees of the department continue to be employed by the town? Will all employees?
To be determined.
Yes. What did you say, to be determined?
Yes. It depends. They're at will till further notice. Sorry, I'm causing trouble, I'm tired, it's 9:20.
Should the current assistant treasurer, assistant collector, assistant accountant, and principal assessor be the first appointees to these positions?
We do not have assistant accountant.
We have a vacancy.
No, we don't have the position, assistant accountant.
No, we don't.
And what would the other, we have an assistant treasurer, what else?
We have an assistant treasurer, assistant collector.
We don't have an assistant collector. The assistant treasurer is assistant treasurer-collector.
Principal assessor was the fourth one.
We have an assessor manager.
Okay, that was it on that. We'll get that out to them.
Flunk that, Coez.
What's that?
Flunk that, Coez.
I'm wondering, why do they have to know that to repeal an act? It's so strange, okay.
Motion adjourned?
I'll make a motion at 9:20 PM. Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion, none. All in favor, unanimous. Our next regular meeting of the board is likely to be Monday, November 8th, at 6:30.